Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, September 17th, 2018 to order. And please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Okay. Albertson.
Here.
Bueller.
Here.
Danforth, absent. Lalum.
Here.
Manti.
Here.
Roby.
Here.
Solom.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Vilhauer.
Here.
Wy.
Present.
Thank you.
All right. The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there?
So moved.
Somebody that wants to recuse themselves?
Mayor, for the record, I'll recuse myself from the consent agenda because of item 1B as well as items 6, 7, and 8. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So...
Wake me up in 20 minutes, will ya?
We have a motion by Bueller and a second by Thorson. Anyone else want to recuse themselves or make a comment? Councilman Vilhauer?
I've got a question. We just received a handout, I see, before the meeting started on the, I'm assuming that the contract for equipment slash personnel rental. I assume that has to do with item 1E. Is that correct?
That's correct. That would be the storable quote.
I mean, it's not the consent agenda. Are those rates comparable to what we saw last year? Or should we pull this out and have it a separate agenda item? Or...
They are very similar to last year's prices. Matter of fact, there was quite a few contractors that didn't adjust their prices at all.
All right. Any other discussion about approving the consent agenda? All right, we have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 2 is public comment. And this is the time reserved for anyone who would like to make a public comment about anything that is not on the agenda. Now's your chance. See no one, we'll move on. Item 3 is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion and second?
So moved.
Moved by Vilhauer, second by Manti. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 4 is resolution number 18-40, annexing Eastwoods 20th Edition to the municipality of Watertown, County of Cottington, South Dakota. So look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Bueller, second by Manti. And Heath, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So before you tonight for council approval or consideration would be the resolution for the annexation of Eastwoods 20th Edition up in the northeast part of town here. And obviously, the primary function of this resolution is strictly for annexation of this parcel of land to be subsequently rezoned and then re-subdivided as well, so...
Okay, any questions or comments? See none, all those... Oh, Councilman Vilhauer?
Where is the park going to be in that area that we're annexing? I mean, because I know that was discussed or has been discussed.
Yes, Pete, if you could, do you have my screen up? All right, so there, can you see it now? I apologize for my clumsiness here behind the screen. Generally speaking, and Brandy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the park area was going to be located approximately in this easterly area. I don't know if you can see where my cursor's at here. Or if you've got a better map of that handy, Brandy. But that is generally speaking where the park area was going to be.
And where is the nearest other park or existing park?
Um, if I can...
Because I know that's been a topic of discussion more so recently that, you know, make sure you get adequate park. And so where is the closest other park, Brandy?
It is along that greenway where Cherry Creek runs to the west. And here I'll get GIS.
Is that accurate right there?
Yep.
I'm learning my park areas yet, but I believe that's one of them, probably the closest one. Is that right, Brandy?
Yes, yep.
Any other questions? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 5 is the second reading of ordinance number 18-19, amending zoning district boundaries by zoning Eastwoods 20th Edition to R1 Single Family Residential District. And I will look for a motion and second for approval, and then I'll open the public hearing. Moved by Lalum, second by Roby. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing and let Heath talk about it first, and if anyone wants to come up, they'll have a chance.
Yeah, so this, being second reading of this ordinance would finalize the rezoning of this area that's to be annexed and solidify the zoning to an R1 Single Family Residential District for the upcoming development of that property into single-family homes. And we'd be glad to help answer any questions anybody might have.
It's R1 adjacent to it, the entire length of it. So Councilman Lalum?
Heath, will there be a plat to follow in the coming weeks, I would assume?
Yes, there will. And Brandy, do you have an idea on the timeline for that as far as application of materials for that process?
So we were, they submitted the plat for Eastwood 20th Edition on Friday, but we are still working with them as well on updating their preliminary plan for that area. So then, once we get, we had our design review team meeting, so now we'll be getting in contact with the developer and their engineer to revise any comments that we found just per going through our checklist of our ordinances. And then we'll receive that back, and then that preliminary plan will come back to plan commission for a public hearing before it will approve any plat.
Councilman Lalum?
Heath, I'd like us to kind of start implementing some of that stuff that we have talked about in the past about making the checklist and have all that set forward. That way, we get a chance to kind of go through it and make sure that all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that input and that, those are the steps that Brandy has started to take in this process. The initial one being taking a look at their preliminary plan that had expired and getting a new, fresh look at that with all the new staff that are on board now as opposed to, was it three years ago the previous one was filed?
Yep.
And has since expired. So one of those formalities was to submit a new, updated preliminary plan. And we spoke with the developer, and she's been very receptive to our comments in coordinating this and moving forward, so...
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak about this issue? See none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any more question or comment from the council? All right, then I will look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 6 is application for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-sale liquor license from Investment Opportunities Unlimited, Inc., doing business as Investment Opportunities Unlimited, Inc., 964 North Lake Drive, to Harry's Haircuts and Hot Towels, LLC, doing business as Harry's Haircuts and Hot Towels, LLC, 16 West Kemp Avenue. So I'll look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Solom, second by Vilhauer, and I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And Kristin, you want to say anything about this?
No, just that the transfer of one of our liquor licenses in the city.
Nothing unusual about it?
Nope, and all the paperwork is signed and ready to go.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this? So come forward. See no, and I will close the public hearing. And is there any more council questions or comments? Then I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 7 is application for a new retail on-sale Sunday liquor license for Harry's Haircuts and Hot Towels, LLC, doing business as Harry's Haircuts and Hot Towels, LLC, 16 West Kemp Avenue. So I will look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Manti and second by Albertson. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this issue? See none, I will close the public hearing and just ask, Kristin, is there anything unusual about this?
No, this would just be to apply to, for the Sunday liquor sales. I know this ordinance is kind of coming up too, but with the timing of this, this would be the standard practice that's in place until that ordinance takes effect, if it passes, so...
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 8 is application for a new retail on/off sale wine license for Maria A. Rodriguez, doing business as El Tapatio, 715 Ninth Avenue, Southeast. I'll look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Lalum, second by Manti. And I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this? See none, I will close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Nothing unusual about this? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 9 is ordinance number 18-17 for the 2019 city budget appropriation. And I will look for a motion and second for approval before we have discussion.
So moved.
Moved by Lalum, second by Roby. And now, okay, Kristin, would you like to...
Okay, thank you. This will be the second reading of the 2019 budget. There are no changes from the first reading, so this is everything that we discussed in our budget hearing, so that's it.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make any comments or ask any questions?
Well, I just, would you just clarify, this is approving the budget as discussed at the budget hearing, so this goes into the books, so to speak.
So that's exactly right. We held the two nights of meetings to go over each department and all the different funds budget. And what this does is, this is the ordinance that by law sets the budget for the 2019 calendar year for the city of Watertown.
And the public hearings were at the hearing, they were...
Yeah, yeah, you don't actually have a public hearing on the ordinance, but the budget hearings were the time for comments, questions, and concerns, so...
Okay, thank you. Council have any comments or questions? All right, then I will look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We have a budget. That was easy. Item number 10 is ordinance number 18-18, amending chapter 2.01 regarding day and time restrictions on the sale of alcoholic beverages. I'll look for a motion and second on this.
So moved.
Moved by Bueller, second by Lalum. And no public hearing on this one either. Matt, do you want to tell us about this one?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I'm going to try to be a little more succinct this time than I was the first time I tried to explain this. But so basically, this ordinance would repeal the sections of our ordinance that allow alcohol sales on Memorial Day and Sundays because it's redundant with state law as it's now written. It would also eliminate the restriction of 11:00 a.m. to midnight sales on Sundays.
Eliminate a restriction.
Yeah, so now, it'll, on Sundays, it would be allowed from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., just like any other day.
Right, and you can buy alcohol on those holidays, too. Whichever, no, I already forgot.
It would also remove the requirement to get a separate Sunday license.
It's just automatic.
Right.
If you have a license.
Right.
You don't need a separate license for that.
Correct.
Okay. Councilwoman Vilhauer?
So this is automatic versus, I mean, so the licensees don't have to come back now and apply for any kind of change, and this is automatic because that's what our ordinance will now say or what the state law says.
Correct.
Okay.
So we match the state law if we pass this?
Correct, yep.
So if you know the state law, you'll be compliant with ours. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 11 is consideration of application for a sidewalk cafe for Sparky's Bar, 19 North Broadway. And I'll look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Vilhauer, second by Roby. And Ken Buocoltz, our building official, is here to tell us about this, so go ahead, Ken.
Yes, Sparky's came to us on about 9:00, 4:18 for a review of the sidewalk cafe permit. Lee and myself have both looked over this. Neither one of us have any issues with this request. They have done all the necessary plats, insurance, indication as to where they're going to put their stuff, and they've met all of our conditions. I was just curious, one of these questions we have, the approved hours of operations is not to exceed 11:00 p.m., excluding special events per city council. Does that have any variance down to what we just talked about passing?
Say that again, what's the question?
Well, there was a provision within the sidewalk. If you want to go back to the first page, would you please? There's a note there for approved hours of operation that says not to exceed past 11:00 p.m., excluding special events per city council, 7:00, 6:15. But that's just city ordinance, so that wouldn't be superseded by this other thing that we're changing right now about Sunday liquor sales or anything like that.
I don't believe so.
To extend past 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock.
It talks about a special event?
Well, it limits them to shutting down every cafe permit at 11 o'clock at night except for special events.
Like, does our sidewalk cafe permit restrict to 11:00 p.m.?
Yeah.
Then what we just did doesn't affect that.
Okay.
Yep.
As just for your consideration, if there's any other issues, that would be it.
Councilwoman Manti?
We had this discussion once before, and I'm sure this will be fine, but is the materials used outside to establish the chains and, you know, or the area of it?
Some of those are looking pretty crude, but state statute only requires a rope to satisfy that. And I know there's some of those are getting out there pretty tough, and that might be another point that we're going to have to discuss someday and tell everybody, hey, unless you guys clean this up and make it look better, we're going to reject them all.
Right, because we actually made that, well, we didn't make a stipulation, did we? What did we do on that one? We talked about it.
You discussed it, but that's as far as it went, and you want to kind of hit it as a whole group instead of just picking on one, more or less.
Yeah, I'll go door to door, Josh will come with me.
I'll go with you, Beth.
How long is the sidewalk permit valid, Ken?
Until we, it's indefinite unless we pull it.
Okay, so...
But we can pull it for any reason we want, they do not have to come back, no.
But we, if it was looking tacky, the council could pull it back and reconsider.
Absolutely, yep.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Ken, I've got a question. Okay, there needs to be at least five foot of clear pedestrian path on the sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
Okay, as I look at the site plan, it's a 17-foot sidewalk, right?
Yes, but there's a couple of obstructions, one at 14-foot and one at 15-foot, so they'd have to limit the area that they allow the chairs and stuff go into, like, nine foot at that spot and 10 foot at the other spot, yep.
Okay, I guess that was my question, because we really don't see where the cafe itself would be on that site plan.
They submitted another page, but they didn't put many dimensions on it, but they are aware of those rules, and that's what we go out and inspect by also.
Okay, good enough. Thanks, Ken.
Other comments? Councilman Roby?
I'm sure this doesn't apply, but did the smoking ordinances have anything to do with any of this? They've got a patio, an enclosed patio, but this is on the sidewalk, so no issues there.
No smoking, right? Or is there smoking? There is smoking.
It would be whatever smoking's allowed in a public area right now. I don't think we control that. I think we only control it within the building, so I think as long as you're out on a public sidewalk, you can smoke.
We can't even hardly regulate it inside.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Ken. I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 12 is consideration of a pyrotechnics or open flame permit application for fireworks display at the Watertown Football Stadium, burning of the W on September 13, 2018. And I would look for a motion and second for approval, and then, believe me, I am going to explain why this is on the agenda.
So I'll move.
Yeah, moved by Albertson.
Do you have one? I'm sure I have.
Second by Roby. Okay, and Chip's here to help me out. We did receive an application prior to the event. These have to be approved by the council, but we didn't have the application in enough time to get it on the last council agenda, so this was the next council meeting. And it has to be approved by you. And so our, we're not clear on the form about when they need to apply, and we need to make that better. This isn't really the applicant's fault. So, I mean, there is a fee associated with not having, for shooting those fireworks off before the permits being issued, but if you would like to waive it, that would be your prerogative. So does anybody have any questions for Chip? Councilwoman Wy?
Are you going to, I guess the obvious question, are you going to work a date into it, the application process from here on out?
Yeah, I'm going to work with the finance office and get the dates of all the council meetings and then the dates when the agenda has to be printed, so they'll have a drop date. What happened here is the, every year they've received a permit, and then last year we started following actually state statute and having the council approve fireworks permits. As if you remember, we used to do it along with the mayor, and then we brought the council in on it like the state statute, you know, says. And this applicant, there was some new people at the school district, and they weren't aware of the fireworks, you know, getting the permit. Actually, this vendor then called the school and said, do you want to do fireworks? Then they sent me the permit, and that's where we're at.
It's had to put this on the agenda. It's after the fact. It's not the applicant's fault, so by law, there's a fee or a fine for doing this. I, they have to amend...
How much is the fine?
...the motion? Or could that just be to waive a fine?
I don't think we need to do anything on that.
Don't need to do anything.
But is there a fee associated with the application? No. Yeah, we don't need...
There is, but we're just getting at, starting to collect that, too.
Oh, okay.
It's under, I have to look at the other...
Fee resolution.
Yes. The, what's it called again?
The fee resolution.
Yes, the fee resolution.
Is there a reason that we can't do these 30 days in advance?
That we can't what?
That we can't have these 30 days in advance? I mean, I understand that they didn't realize that.
Yeah, they didn't, we can figure that out, but we just haven't told them.
But every time we come to this, it's like two days later, we're shooting off fireworks. It's like, is there a 15-day window or something? Is there a reason that they wait till the last minute?
No, it's just everybody getting trained in the process.
Right.
We actually had one this Saturday, or Sunday or Saturday, that we had for two months, that you guys approved two months ago.
Okay.
You know, right on there, the permit says, you know, if there's a dry, dryer, other environmental issues come up, or safety issues that we at any time can pull that permit as a fire department, Ken.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was like a 15-day, you have to do this within 15 days or something like that. I just don't want to see something like this coming up.
Right, no, it's just everybody getting trained in on the new process.
Part of it is us getting trained in.
What is the, what is the fine associated with shooting after the fact?
It was...
Matt?
Well, just that that whole section of our ordinance has a general punishment at the end of $200 or 30 days in jail, just like all of our ordinances have. Basically, you know, we have the ability to choose not to prosecute, so we don't need to take any sort of action. We just won't. Assuming this passes, we won't prosecute.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Councilman Albertson?
Would you like me to amend my motion?
No, you don't have to.
Yeah, I know we don't have to, but I could...
Oh, I don't think that's necessary, no. I, no, I don't need you to do that. I just, we talked about there having been a punishment, and I don't think it's appropriate personally when we haven't been clear about when you have to have your application to us. It's kind of hard for us to punish somebody for not having it to us soon enough. They had it almost a couple of weeks early, so, I mean, a couple of weeks isn't enough at times, so that's the case here. Any other comments or questions? I'll look for action then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 13 is approval of resolution number 18-41 for certain solid waste improvements, giving approval to the issuance and sale of revenue bond and authorizing the mayor to sign all documents for the loan agreement with the state of South Dakota. So I'll look for a motion, second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Lalum.
Second.
Second by Manti. And I will let Kristin explain this. And, okay, I see Mike's here, too.
Yep, thank you. Mike and I together will kind of go over this. Mike, I don't know if you want to start with the backstory of applying for the grant and the loan and...
Okay. Yeah, well, first of all, the resolution and the loan before you tonight, it is for the landfill storm order improvement project 1818. The project did reach substantial completion on the due date of August 31st. And back last year in September 2017, I came before the council with a resolution as part of this funding package for a, for the mayor to, to request authorization for the mayor to sign the documents for the grant portion of a funding package for this project. And tonight, resolution 1841 is for the loan portion of this funding project. And you might recall, the reason we applied for funding assistance was that our solid waste cash reserves were significantly reduced when we had to exercise the option and make a lump sum payment on purchasing the 65 acres contiguous with the northeast perimeter of the landfill. And then subsequently, the city was awarded this package as, it consists of a grant, which is for 30% of all approved expenditures, not to exceed $162,000. And with this 2% low interest loan, not to exceed $108,000 on a term of seven years. So the total package of the funding with grant alone funds was $270,000, which is 50% of what we budgeted for the project. So with that, I would just point out that this particular loan at $108,000 would require two annual payments of $8,305.33 due on June 1st and December 1st. And the complete cost of the loan, if we took it full term, would be $116,274.58, which is the $108,000 principal with the $8,274.15 interest. No penalty for early payoff, and we just add that the State Division of Financial and Technical Assistance, who put the package together for us, would like to see us go forward with both components of the funding package. And over the last 18 years, they've awarded us funding in 12 of 13 applications.
Oh, okay, nice. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Kristin, do you want to add anything?
No, I think Mike covered it pretty well.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Mike, is the loan, is the loan component required to, for, by accepting the grant proportion of it? Is the loan side of it required?
No, that's a good question. Sometimes they do tie the distribution of the grant to the distribution of the loan, so if you don't take the loan, you don't get the grant. With this one, they did not tie the two together.
Okay. Is there any cost, administrative costs required to get involved in the loan? I realize, I realize it's an effective rate or a good rate, but is there any administrative costs that we're incurring in accepting the loan?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, not that I'm aware of either.
I mean, we got, we got 40 pages worth of loan documents that, you know, I couldn't help but ask a question then. you know, are, are we paying something for all this paperwork just to save a few bucks in interest?
Not to my knowledge.
No, no.
Okay.
The finance department has the burden of making the payments and going through that process, but they're really good at that. You know what they're doing. Okay, any other comments or questions? Right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number fourteen is authorization for the mayor to sign grant amendment slash extension application for the Upper Big Sioux River Watershed Project. I'll look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Villahauer, second by Albertson, and I see Roger Foot, the coordinator of the Upper Big Sioux River Watershed Project, is here, so Roger, I'll let you explain this.
Um, good evening. Um, we've reached yet again another grant cycle. As you guys have known throughout our history, every three years, we apply for additional funds from the EPA that come through the DNR. Um, recently, you, you guys approved the mayor to sign an extension for our last grant that will come to an end in the middle of two thousand nineteen. This application is to extend that from nineteen to twenty-two with the addition of EPA funds that we'll ask for to cover administrative costs, project costs. Uh, we're asking for four hundred and twenty thousand of EPA funds, and we're matching those locally from the, uh, the funds that the city authorizes us, as well as municipal utilities like Compeska Water Project District, Lake Pelican Water Project District. And then we also get additional funding on a project basis from Game Fish and Parks, NRCS, and everybody else that we can possibly partner with. So this is sort of business as usual. If you would like to keep us doing what we're doing to help improve the water quality in the area and protect Compeska and Pelican, I ask that you authorize the signatures.
All right, any questions? Councilman Robey?
What's the, you said it's four twenty, what's the match?
This is a fifty-fifty application, so four twenty and four twenty.
Are there questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number fifteen is authorization for the mayor to sign the state water plan application for Kittleson Addition Sanitary Sewer Extension. Is there a motion and second?
So moved.
Moved by Manti. Second by Bueller. Okay, Roger, you can, since you're there anyway.
Since we're here anyway. Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you may or may not know, the, the Kittleson Addition is one of those remaining areas that do not have city sewer systems. It is in the watershed project's interest to, if, if we can annex this property into the city, we can therefore provide sewer systems, we can get rid of those septic systems that may or may not be linking wink, leaking wink wink into Lake Pelican. Um, the reason, we got it on the state water plan three years ago, and I have not made a lot of prog- progress with this project. It will drop off this year. The reason for this application is to extend that onto the state water plan for a couple more years to give me additional time to come up with grant funding to help out the landowners' portion of the cost for the annexation and the improvements, the street improvements, the sewer improvements, and everything related to that. I am very confident that I can come up with the additional funding to help lower those individual costs, but I just need more time. And that's the purpose of this application.
All right, are there any questions? Councilman Lalum?
Roger, this is on the north side of Lake Pelican. Um, can you give us an approximate location on those properties?
Fifteenth Avenue Southwest.
It's immediately adjacent to the city limits in Cax Edition, which is, is that thirty-third?
I, I believe so, I think.
Yeah, thirty-third and fifteenth?
Yes.
Yes.
If Pete wanted, he could pull up my screen. I got it on the map here for council's viewing.
I know where it is, but, but general public probably doesn't know.
South of Mount Marty.
There's thirty lots there. We're looking to service all thirty and improve the streets, bring in city services, and get rid of those septic systems.
Other questions? Councilman Albertson?
I do, I just curiosity. Oh, I'm sorry. Dan, go ahead.
Uh, Roger, just a question. The people down there, do they, would they like to be annexed in? And then number two, they, are they thinking that'd be a good deal to have the sewer line in there and so on?
This whole thing was initialized by the people who live there. Um, it's been a while, but we have had public meetings with those. I've talked personally to the majority of those and have good representation with a couple of individuals that have contact with the rest of them. As far as I can tell, I've got very, very good support from the residents in that area.
It's just a matter of money.
It's just a matter of money. Of course, everyone wants something if they don't have to pay the whole bill, so I'm trying to find grant funds to help.
I do have a question, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Y?
That's the properties that are on the lakeshore, correct? And what about the properties on the north side of the road?
This will do all of the properties there, on both sides of that street. The soils are very sandy. I can't tell you how far that the Laatchate flows through those sands, but it all goes downhill.
Which would be the lake.
Exactly.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen is the first reading of ordinance number eighteen dash twenty, Budget Supplement two thousand eighteen. No action required here, but, uh, Kristen, you wanna tell us a little about what's in it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I'll go through just quick on each one of the items that are on this. This is the first reading, but, um, if there's any questions, I can answer them. The first one for the fire department is five thousand dollars. They requested that. Um, they were donated, United Way did a donation of five thousand dollars for their, um, smoke alarm program, but they don't have enough in their budget on the expense side, so that would increase that, but there is revenue on the, the backside for that. Um, the next item is from the street department. That is actually the street assessment projects that the city council has already approved. This is to give the, the budget line the money to go ahead and continue with those projects. The library one is the one that you'll be addressing following this first reading. That is for the boiler. Um, this is, as we know, the boiler project was something that was not budgeted, um, and with there not being enough contingency, this would supplement the two thousand eighteen budget for that project. The next one is the, the gun range, and the only reason I put that in is there's enough dollars, um, and some of the other ones being short, but I think this helps to simplify, um, giving that actual line its, its budget, so that we keep track of it. But with the other projects, they will come in under. And then the very last one, under the capital improvement fund, the six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, that was actually for the land that the council approved purchasing earlier in the year. That was in combination with the Watertown Development Company, uh, I think it was Joan Endries' land that was purchased. Um, that was one where we had the restricted cash for it, but obviously there was no budget for it, um, so this is just to kinda clean up some things with the library and the, um, fire department ones being new that you haven't seen before. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions? Um, and really only the, well, the gun range, um, and the, the boiler, we don't, won't see revenue back, but all the other projects, we'll see revenue coming back on those. All right, thank you. Item number seventeen is consideration of bids received for the Watertown Regional Library Boiler and Heating System Improvements. And, um, gonna look for action for approval. I, I don't know which one it is. It wasn't in there, in the motion, in the description, so I'll wait for, don't let me forget to get a motion after DeeDee tells us about this one. Okay, DeeDee?
Good evening, everyone. Um, it's been a long process to get here, so, um, we finally had the bid opening on Thursday, and, um, our Travis Sickmiller from Metler Sickmiller Engineering could not be here this evening, but I told him that I would convey, um, some, um, many questions you might have, and hopefully I can answer them, probably not as good as an engineer. But we did open the bids on Thursday, sorry, Kristen did, and, um, we received two bids, and they were very close. And, um, I passed out Travis's recommendation to everyone, and he did recommend to go with the, um, apparently low bidder of Redlinger Brothers. Now, um, I also wanna say thank you for, to Kristen, to Heath, to Colin. A lot of people helped me through this process. It was new to me, so if I'm doing something in the wrong order, just let me know.
Okay, so, um, the recommendation was to go with Redlinger Brothers, and that was the low bid. Not by much.
Not by much at all. It was very close.
Really close, wow. I guess it's a pretty, yeah. Yes, Councilman Bueller?
Just out of curiosity, when we look at these, something like this, do we consider a warranty? Are there any warranty issues that we look at? Do we ask those questions? You know, how do they cover that over how much time?
Uh, warranty for the contractor's work or for the individual equipment?
The boiler itself, the equipment.
Yeah, um, I don't believe that Travis told me anything about warranty information. I believe the ones that were installed in two thousand seven may have had only a one-year warranty. Um, so it's definitely something we should look into, although, um, if you look on your, his recommendation, there are some things that he planned, um, specifically to avoid the issues that came about with the old boilers. And, let me see. Is there a way to get that up there? That's not included. I've got it right in front of me, but. So I'm not sure. It's probably better looking right in front of me.
See the arrows? The, if, DeeDee, if you line that up with the arrows on the table, there you go.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, move the microphone. There we go.
So, um, the, both bids didn't come higher, come in higher than expected, and so he wrote out an explanation for why that is, partially because of timing, partially because of some additions to the project that needed to be added, um, such as number two, the natural gas regulator. It was either install that or get all new piping welded in the building to that, so that was not really an option. Well, at least in that part of the building. Um, higher temper controls, and then in part four, that's where he outlined things that he had planned especially to make sure that we do not have, um, these issues in the future. And, um, he discussed those with us, um, before he laid out the bids back and then after as well.
Okay, any questions or comments for DeeDee? All right, so I need a motion to, um, accept the bid of Redlinger Brothers Plumbing and Heating in the amount of ninety-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Kristen's waving at me. Okay, I've got a motion from Albertson, a second from Y. Kristen, did you have something to say?
I just wanted to point out that in the, the first reading that we just went over for the budget supplement, um, the reason I put that in at a hundred and five is to give a little bit if something happens, so we don't have to come back and discuss it, and then that also covered the cost of the engineer to do his work, 'cause it's all part of the, the project, so.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, DeeDee.
Thank you all.
Hope you're warm this winter. That was kinda rough last year. Okay, item eighteen is consideration of change order number one final with the Groot Concrete and Construction for the Sidewalk Accessibility Improvements Project Number eighteen oh four, decreasing the contract twenty thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars eighty cents for a total contract amount of one hundred twenty-one thousand fifty-four dollars twenty cents. And this received the recommendation of the committee. So is there a motion second for approval? Moved by Solum, second by Y, and Heath, you wanna refresh?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so before the council tonight is a, uh, price reduction on this first and final change order for this project. This work is complete. We are about twenty thousand dollars in the city's favor, underspent on this project. Uh, the main reason for that project cost savings is due to the means and methods that were proposed by the contractor and how the removals, uh, were carried out for these ADA curb ramp installations. That process was approved by engineering and closely monitored, and what it did is help prevent the need to saw cut into the roadway and replace, uh, some asphalt. And so that's what the primary brunt of this twenty thousand dollars is, is savings, cost savings on not having to, uh, remove and install asphalt adjacent to these ADA ramps.
And it leaves the road intact, too. That's an added bonus of, you know, in addition to saving all that money.
It is, and, and there are times where that removal can't occur cleanly, and you do compromise the edge of asphalt. Um, and, and you do wanna see it cut out and replaced, but in these cases, that did not happen. It was cut cleanly, and, uh, we had a nice clean edge of asphalt to work with, so we proceeded accordingly.
Very good. Any comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number nineteen is old business. Is there any old business? None. Item twenty is new business. Is there any new business? Also none. Any liaison member reports? None of those either. Okay, we do have a reason to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two, um, to discuss and consult with legal counsel on contractual matters. We do not expect to take action on coming out, so, um, I'll look for a motion and second to go into executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Lalum, second by Manti. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, and we are in executive session.